Good evening, everyone. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 13th, 2019 to the Home News Tribune and the clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Byh Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Mrs. Sidowski.
Here.
Mrs. Seeland.
Here.
Ms. Sevian.
Here.
Ms. Tyus.
Here.
Ms. Spencer.
You too.
Ms. Morella. Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
This is Solis.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. If anyone is confused, stand for the flag signal. This is a reminder that the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 19th, beginning at 7:00 PM here at the Brunswick High School Auditorium. We do have a presentation this evening, and it's the reason why most of us are here. So, Ms. Kiriskusa, if you could please...
Good evening, everyone. Board of Education members, Dr. Johnson, fellow cabinet members, administrators, community members, parents, and New Brunswick students, welcome to the 2019 State Assessment Report and Student Recognition Ceremony. Each year, students from across New Jersey, school, pardon me, each year, school districts from across New Jersey are required to share data from Spring 2019 State Assessments. In New Brunswick, we use our data as an opportunity to reflect on progress, analyze gaps, set goals for improvement, and celebrate the success of our 262 students who exceeded expectations on these assessments. Let's give it up. So let's begin with our district vision statement, which is to prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners and leaders. And one piece of that is through assessment. So, tonight I'm going to be reporting our data from three different assessments. First, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which measures students' progress toward end-of-the-year standards in grades 3 through 11 in English Language Arts and Mathematics. Second, I'm going to be speaking to the ACCESS Assessment, which is assessing comprehension and communication in English state-to-state, which is administered to our students who are English language learners to determine their proficiency in English. And finally, I'm going to be talking about the Dynamic Learning Maps, or the DLM Assessment, which is an alternate assessment to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for students who are identified with the most significant disabilities. Here are the three assessments we're going to be speaking of tonight, and our outcomes. So you're going to be hearing about performance levels. We're going to look at three-year trends of data from 2017 to 2019, district and state data, subgroup data, the progress of our students over two and three years, and then we're going to talk a little bit about our intervention strategies and what our next steps are this year based on the data that we have. And finally, it's going to be followed by our Student Recognition Ceremony. So let's start with our NJSLA Assessment, or the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Now, parents, you should have received your child's individual student report, which shows you that there are five levels of performance in the data. Levels 1 and 2 show us when students did not meet or partially met the expectations or the end-of-year requirements for that grade level. 3 is approaching the standards, and then finally, Levels 4 are students who met the standards.
And a call, the guy.
And a student who you may have sitting with you or near you tonight is being recognized for being a Level 5, which means that they exceeded expectations or they scored a Level 5 on either the ELA or the mathematics portion of the assessment. So let's look a little closer at some of the data that we have. So, this slide here notes trends across three years of administration from 2017 to 2019 in English Language Arts. Now, we see a lot of data out here, but I'm going to ask you to look at the left-hand side of the screen where there is a box. In that box, we have three years of data in grades 3 through 10 for students who did not yet meet, which would be Level 1, or partially met expectations, which would be Level 2. Now, what we hope to see are these scores, or the percentage of students in this area, 1 or 2, beginning to go down. Now, as you look to the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see two color-coded columns. The first column shows that we have, in all grade levels, a decrease in Levels 1 and 2. Similarly, if you look to the right-hand side of the screen and you look in the box, that shows students who have scored a Level 4 or 5. Those are the students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. The second column, in green, will show the grade levels where the percentage of students has increased. The same analysis was done in mathematics. And if you look to the right-hand side of the screen and you see the two separate columns, the first column in red shows the grade levels where we have a decrease shown in red. The increase is shown in green. So you can see that there are pockets of success in mathematics, especially in grades 7 and in Algebra 2. In this slide, we're asked to look at a comparison between the number of students that were tested in 2018 versus the number that were tested in English Language Arts in 2019. We continue to test about the same number of students in ELA in 2018 and 2019, as well as in mathematics. In this next slide, we are looking at a three-year trend of our students in ELA as compared to the state average. So you can see that our improvement rate is exceeding the state percentage in grades 3, 4, and 5, where the state is going up in Levels 1 and 2. We're actually, the number of students that we have in Levels 1 and 2 are actually decreasing. When we look at grades 6, 7, and 8, we have exceeded the state percentages in comparison over three years by almost 10% in some grades. And then finally, if your eyes take you to the right-hand side of the screen, you can see that the students over three years in ELA in grades 6, 7, and 8 have shown sometimes a four- and five-year percentage increase as compared to the state. When we look at the same data in math, we analyze that same trend, and we see that in grade 7, we see a decrease in the number of Levels 1s and 2s where the state increased. And in Algebra 2 and geometry, we showed notable growth as well. When we look across to the right-hand side of the screen, where the state only showed an average percentage increase in mathematics, over 1.6%, we showed a 9.1% in grade 7 mathematics. Similarly, when we look at Algebra 2, we see notable growth in that area as well. So now, we can focus on Spring 2019, which is when our students just took it last year, and we can compare that data to the state percentage. You can see in grades 3 through 5, students in Levels 1 and 2 are approaching the state average, as well as grades 6, 7, and 8. As our eyes move across the screen to Levels 4s and 5s, we are approaching the state average in percentage comparison as well. And if we continue on the same trend, we are hoping to surpass the state percentage averages in the near future. We do the same comparison in mathematics, and we see that in grade 7, we see a decrease in Levels 1 and 2. When we are looking at the decrease in Levels 1 and 2, we can look across the screen and see in grade 7, Algebra 2, and geometry, there's decreases in Level 2, which means that we have a larger number of students beginning to meet and exceed expectations, which would be they would be achieving Levels 4 and 5. Then we look at the percentage of students with disabilities who are meeting and exceeding expectations from 2018 to 2019, and we see that in most grade levels in ELA, there has been an increase. See noted in green. And as we move into mathematics, we see a box around Levels 4 and 5 from 2018 to 2019, and in math, we continue to see pockets of improvement in Levels 4 and 5, most notably in grade 7. Now, I want to pause here for a moment and let you know that reporting out data, we're not just looking at our successes, which are very important because we want to build on the work that we're doing, but we also have to take a step back and look at the dip in scores in certain areas as well. It's important that we're able to dig deeper into particular grade levels and skills so we can develop curriculum interventions so that we can plan for the school year. So when we review the 2018-19 data for our students who are English language learners, we noticed an increase in Level 4 and 5, noted in the box, in all but about two grades. So you can see that the increase is marked in green for each grade level that showed an increase. Similarly, we did the same analysis in math. We see the grade 4 showed strong growth from 2018 to 2019 for our English language learners, from 2018 to 2019. So now, our second assessment is the ACCESS. And as I mentioned earlier, this assessment is assessing comprehension and communication in English state-to-state. This is a K-12 assessment that's administered to students who are ELL to measure English proficiency. Now, there are six proficiency levels ranging from entering all the way to reaching. Students receiving services are expected to advance at least one level each year. Now, this looks like a lot of data, and you can see that that's because this assessment is for K-12. So let's hear on the left-hand side, we have all grade levels from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade, and we have all of the percentages for students showing English proficiency who took the assessment over three years. So let's go again to the color-coded columns on the right-hand side. So the first column shows the percentage decrease in Levels 1 and 2. Remember, we want less students in Levels 1 and 2, and that's noted in red. The second column, we see the percentage of students scoring Levels 5 and 6, so this is noted in green. We see in this data that the most positive gains are in grade 7, where we had 13% of students who were able to score in the Level 5 or 6 over the three-year trend. We looked at the number of students who were tested using the ACCESS Assessment, and we compared it from 2018 to 2019, and we see that our numbers have increased, and we are continuing with the same trend as we enter the 2019-20 school year as well. So this brings us to our third and final assessment, the Dynamic Learning Map, which, as I mentioned earlier, is an alternate assessment for the NJSLA that's administered to students who are identified with the most significant cognitive disabilities. The proficiency levels, the performance levels for this assessment are in four parts, ranging from emerging all the way up through advanced. So you see here that this slide shows the results of students who took the DLM across three years in English Language Arts. So I ask you to bring your eyes again to the right-hand side of the screen, and you see in the first column, we have Levels 1 and 2. We want to see red in that column because we want less students in Level 1 and 2. And in Levels 3 and 4 is the second column. So as you can see, there are pockets of success, especially in grades 4 and 5. And in math, you can see noteworthy success in grade 4 and 8 as well. So as we look at the number of students who took the DLM, or the Dynamic Learning Map, from 2018 to 2019, it's important to mention that when reporting out this data, students who take the DLM in the New Brunswick Public Schools make up less than 1% of our student population. So we're dealing with, we're reporting out on a very small cohort of students. But as you can see, about the same number of students were administered the DLM in 2018 as in 2019. So we're down to our final few slides. So our final few slides show the state comparison with DLM. In English Language Arts, progress was demonstrated in grades 7 and 8, where we had 14% of our students in grade 7 and 25% of our students in grade 8, as compared to the state's 3% and 1% respectively. And in math, our grade 4 students demonstrated success at more than 10 times the state percentage. The percent comparison of a student who achieved Levels 3 and 4 in Language Arts is shown in the box on the right. Remember, there's four levels for DLM. Grades 7 and 8 showed positive gains through a notable discrepancy. And in math, grades 6 and 7 showed favorable results when placed side-to-side with the state results. So, we do see pockets of success, but as I mentioned earlier, we realize that there is still work to do. So this data makes us take a step back, and it makes us ask some questions about what work we still need to do. We know that we need to identify strengths and gaps that exist in our curriculum and instruction. We know that we need to continue using data as a tool, and also take a look at the current practices and initiatives that we're developing to ensure student success. So we've put together a list of just some of the intervention strategies that we're implementing this year in English Language Arts and Mathematics. So, in English Language Arts in grades 1 and 2, we are bringing in some new literacy units so that students can, in grades 1 and 2, experience high-level tasks and academic rigor. We're going to continue to develop teachers professionally, bring in high-quality writing tasks for our students, authentic writing experience, authentic writing experiences for our middle school students, and text-based writing for argument. We want students to see themselves in our curriculum. Additionally, we have implemented cognitively demanding task sequences in the high school, and we want to implement and sustain the high-leverage practices that we began just a few short years ago that has really turned some of this data around for New Brunswick Public Schools. When thinking about mathematics, we have implemented a targeted intervention program for grades 1 through 3 in Number Space 10. We're realigning our pacing guides, and we're looking at common assessments so that we can have periodic check-ins with students to make sure that they're progressing toward our end-of-the-year expectations in each grade. We've implemented math labs in the high school, which are a targeted intervention, which provide the support for students in the Algebra 1 classes. And finally, we focus professional development, and our hope is to deepen teacher content and pedagogical knowledge. So you have been a very patient audience, but as you can see, we've really taken a lot of time to look at the data that we have before us, and we have some big plans for our students and our district for the coming school year. But, that takes us to the next part of our presentation. Raise your hand if you're ready for this part. Let me see hands. Well, as fun as data can be, we certainly have some excited students waiting in the audience, so I'm going to call each of our principals up so they can recognize the Level 5 students. So these are the students, remember, who are exceeding expectations in the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. And, Dr. Caldwell, last year, I remember, and I don't want to steal your quote, but I remember that you looked at the audience and you said about our students, "When we talk about students who are a Level 5, that means that they scored the best, not just in New Brunswick, but across the entire state of New Jersey." So I just want everyone to feel how important it is, what we have with us tonight. So, I'm going to turn this over to our wonderful principals, and I'm going to ask Ms. Castillo to start us off. Good evening. So for Language Arts Literacy, from Redstone School, we have Kaylee Bautista. And we also have Jonathan Ortiz for Language Arts and Mathematics. Mr. Kyoto, from Lincoln Annex School.
All right, from Lincoln Annex School for Language Arts, Aiden Alro. Jonathan Alvarez. Scotty Abalone. Leslie Aragon. Ava Barrios. Roman Benitez. Janaya Boconegra. Neeran Bravo. Isabella Creones. Heidi Calderon. Tyler Carlon. Christopher Ardo. Ashley Figaro. Joseph Fleming. Elijah Flores. Elijah Flores. Jessly George. Jordan Govia. Marianella Ranga. Eddie Guzman. Jaden Hale. Yeslim Hernandez. Alonso Hernandez. Daisy Camara. Jaden Lim. Valeria Lopez. Hugo Meneses. Elani Peralta. Deandra Peralta. Amy Reyes. Jessica Reyes. Marcos Reyes. David Rodriguez. Idali Rojas. Genesis Rosales. Matthew Ruiz. Allison Sanchez. Jocelyn Santiago. Diana Solis. Nicole Solis. Yuritzie Vasquez. Adriana Vasquez. Grace Zamora. Ameri Zarzuela. And now, we will move on to those that achieved the Level V in Mathematics. Daniela Avila. Liliana Perita. Sophia Chen. Ever Diaz. Eric Galindo Victoriano. Anthony Garcia. Darwin Joyasaka. Alfonso Almedo. And Rebel Zimuru. And the next set of names earned a Level V in both Math and Language Arts. Jorge Ceballos. Madeline Hernandez. Alexander Osuna. Mariana Ovando. Samantha Ruiz. Angel Tukle. And Roger Vasquez. A round of applause for our Lincoln Annex students. Genesis Martinez.
Next up, we have Lord Sterling School. Good evening. I am extremely proud to announce the students who exceeded expectation from Lord Sterling Community School. So when I call your name, please come up. For English Language Arts, Adair Garcia Cruz. Also, English Language Arts, Allison Quintana. And for English Language Arts, Alexandria Rodriguez Peralta. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Redway and Lord Sterling students. Next up, we have Ms. Rodriguez from McKinley School.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to recognize the following students who have exceeded expectations in Language Arts Literacy and Math, and I will call them one at a time. And this is from McKinley Community School. When I call your name, McKinley students, please come forward. Annalise Aracena. Jarvis Arazza Almero. Matthew Bruno Nicio. Juan Vasquez Pibis. The following students have exceeded expectations in Mathematics. Jocelyn Gonzalez. Javiza Gonzalez Rivas. And the following student exceeded expectations in Language Arts and Mathematics. Congratulations to John Andre Zambro. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Ms. Robinson for Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts.
Good evening. I am so, so proud of you, boys and girls. I'm going to start with the students who exceeded expectation in English Language Arts. Karan Carter. Sherwin Mejia Rodriguez. Julian Nicholas. Taryn Pacheco. Diana Ricardo. Denise Ricardo. Kimberly Robles Flores. The following students exceeded expectation in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. Adrian Carrillo Ricardo. Anthony Gomez. Angie Martinez Nicholas. Isabella Ventura. And our last two students exceeded expectation in Mathematics, Jayne and Andino Hernandez. Lizbeth Mayoral Garcia. Congratulations to all the students in the School for the Arts students. We're so proud of you.
Messia Sia for Roosevelt School.
It is an honor to recognize all the students from Roosevelt Elementary who exceeded expectations on the NJSLA. Starting with the students who exceeded in English Language Arts, Loriani Garcia. Angel Garcia Arasol. In Mathematics, Margarita Hernandez Ramirez. Janelle Berendez Alonso. Josely Perez Garcia. Estoria Torres. Francisco Torres. Darren Castro Cabeda.
Mr. Smith from Woodrow Wilson School.
The Woodrow Wilson family is proud to present the following students who exceeded expectations on the New Jersey ASLA for English Language Arts. First up, Benjamin Hernandez Carvalho. Giovanna Zurey Vargas. Autry Karume. Sebastian Reyes. Angeline Rivera. Sebastian Rodriguez. Alexander Santos. Alexander Santos. Leilani Taylor Rodriguez. Amaya Delbridge. Maria Gianotto. Chiana Blackburn. And Sebastian Caracas. Congratulations to the team of Woodrow Wilson. What a great production.
Next, we would like to invite Ms. Gonzalez Hugo from New Brunswick Middle School.
Good evening. It is an honor to recognize the students from the middle school. I will be calling the students that exceeded expectations for English Language Arts. Javier Agramonte. Priana Alegría. Ashley Alonso Perez. Wesley Alvarez Mejia. Kimberly Aparicio Gomez. Osvaldo Sergio Baiz Rosas. Eduardo Petancur Sierra. Anthony Bonilla Chirinos. Arturo Breniz. Daniel Camacho Losada. Ashley Carranza. Kaori Chan Acevedo. No Cano. Angel Diaz Charquin. Ebony Elliott. Emily Espa. Andrea Eugenio Cruz. Jennifer Pereira Fernandez. Brady Garcia. John Gomez Lopez. Adier Gonzalez. Evelyn Gonzalez. Javier Granda Miller. Jennifer Fernandez. Ashley Fernandez Lobo. Gisele Herrera. Anthony Jacinto Mexica. Joseph Leon Montesino. Jocelyn Lopez Lopez. Alejandro Lucas Nieto. Alexandra Luis Lopez. Akesali Marin. Ashley Martinez Reyes. Kenny Mena. Joanna Montero Galindo. Kimbasi Loyola. Jaleelin Perez. Christopher Perez Caballero. Evelyn Ponse. Angelie Posso. Christopher Ramirez. Jose Armani Rodriguez. Anjeli Rodriguez Jimenez. Susana Romas. Chelsea Román. Jalisa Santana. Jamar Seirai. Emoni Satin. Daisy Torres. Alisdelmi Torres Madera. Aleny Villa Torres. Edgar Villa. Pijalva Morales. Care Pijanueva Juárez. Natalia Savala Garcia. Students that exceeded expectations in math. Franzen Rodriguez. Jason Channis Jaime. Ephraim Garcia. Students that exceeded expectation in English Language Arts and math. Christian Grimaldo Garcia. Sol Jimenez Ortiz. Jason Rian. Ricardo Ornel. Betsy Rodriguez Nicolas. And Daisy Sanchez Garcia. Congratulations to all our students.
All right, three, two, one, it's smiles. Great job.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Redler for New Brunswick High School.
Good evening. I'm very proud of New Brunswick High School students. I would like to introduce the students who exceeded expectations on the NJSLA English Language Arts literacy portion of the NJSLA test. So our first student, Carlos Acevedo. Jessica Aguilar Jimenez. Lord Asperville. Jenny Ornius Rojas. Greina Castillo Contreras. LaGorita Ejero Arita. Yarlos Concepcion Apara. David Cruz Egüero. Christopher Duran Rojas. Valerie Enamorado. Angelica Farra Ferro. Damian Ovija. Natalie Luebes. Stephanie Luebes. Diana Isador. Derek Jacquez Fragoso. Brian Latham. Martin Lopez Rafael. Anhee Martinez. Jose Mateo Rafael. Aisha Marino Aguilar. Stephanie Marino Ramos. Luis Morales Batista. Victor Nunes Rome. Janita Navares Romero. James Nicolai. John Nicolai. Jose Nicholas. Elvis Nicholas Gaspar. Adrian Nalasco. Paul Nalasco. Mia Ortega. Michelle Ortiz Marino. Steven Ortiz Rayo. Lizbeth Herolta. Dacelis Perez. Jacqueline Perez Garcia. Laquell Perez Hernandez. Brian Pineda. Luis Posadas. Michelle Ramos. Luisia Rosa, I apologize. Corelli Rabia Estevez. Donna Rojas. Rebecca Rojas. Marcos Sanchez. Juan Carlos Sanchez Santos. Yanais Samado. Ashley Torres. Salma Tonel. Brian Valdez. Anthony Vasquez Juárez. David Vivas, excuse me, David Vivas de los Santos. Hugo Vivas de los Santos. Amani Weaver. I would like to congratulate the New Brunswick High School students on this achievement. We're very proud of you. Thank you.
And for New Brunswick PTEC, we have Principal Mr. Finelli. And for New Brunswick PTEC, we have Principal Mr. Finelli.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of all the members of the PTEC family, we would like to congratulate Ms. Jasmine Perry for outstanding achievement in English Language Arts Literacy.
Mr. Finelli is also passing out the recognition on behalf of Mr. Clifford for New Brunswick Health Sciences Tech High School. Mr. Finelli?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate the members of the Health Science family. When your name is called, if you would please come up for your achievement. Jeremy Alberto. Marcella Santos. Yarmili Banos Nieto. Alexis Benitez Lopez. Jacob Bati. Genesis Castillo. Monica Cunningham. Heidi Flores Vargas. Jekyll Garcia. Emily Lardo Torres. Thomas Jenkins. Urban Carmoon. Levnik Kirchmeyer. Angie Lopez. Dianora Maldonado. Katherine Mejia Zangia. Christian Almedo. Oscar Asario Arroza. Angel Palma. Angelica Carles. Bryant Perez. Carlos Perez Hernandez. Angela's Pitas. Marabella Ramirez Cantorán. Abe Ramos Stefino. Justin Reynoso. Norma Rodriguez Ortiz. Arlie Romero de Santiago. Joseph Ruiz. Lisbeth Salva Polanco. Savannah Simpson. Lynette Valdez. Harrison Verilla Leonor. Joshua Vasquez. Joseph Veliz. Francisco Victorino Herrera. Leslie Exula. Melanie Ugalium. Chloe Yu. Congratulations to all the students from the Health Sciences families.
Get ready. Three, two, one, it's time. Great job!
We have three very special students to call up to the stage now. Each of the students who I call have received not just exceeding expectations on the NJSLA assessment, but a perfect score in either ELA, Math, or we have one student who has received a perfect score in both assessments. So, we'd like to begin by recognizing perfect score for English Language Arts and Literacy goes to Anthony Gomez. From Paul Earlton School. Anthony was here, he may have left already, so we are going to send his special exceeding expectations pin and his New Brunswick special treat bag home with his principal this evening, so she can surprise him with it tomorrow. Mrs. Robinson? Our next student, Mary Elena Granja Castillo. From Licken Addit School. Mr. Kyoto, we are going to turn the pin and the gift over to you. At last, but certainly not least, we have a student who received a perfect score in both ELA and Mathematics. This student is Daisy Sanchez Garcia. Hey, Dr. McCoy just said that they're home studying. I think you're right. And so Daisy is from New Brunswick Middle School. Ms. Gonzales Fungo, we will turn the exceeding expectations pin over to you, along with the treat bag. And what an amazing accomplishment for all of our students tonight. Let's give them all one final round.
As you make your way out of the auditorium, and I did just want to thank also and recognize all the parents and guardians of the series, and you put all those pants on. Thank you to you for all of your support and your children and all that you do throughout the entire career to make sure that they get their restful night's sleep and breakfast in the morning. All of the work that you do at home definitely contributes to their success in the classroom. So thank you, parents. Before I move on to item number four, if there is anyone in the audience who'd like to make a public comment this evening, I'd ask that you go to the microphone and sign your name to the list, just so that we have some order this evening. Again, if you'd like to make a public comment during the public comment portion of this meeting, please go ahead and sign your names to the list now. Now with that being said, Mr. General, I am going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the minutes of last month's regular Board of Education meeting, which was on September 17th. If I could have a motion? Yes. Thank you, Mr. General. We'll move on to item number five, the superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, good evening. For the month of September, we had 66 suspensions, in one case of HIV. Our student enrollment is at 10,345. Student attendance is at 94%. And our certificated staff attendance is at 98%. I just want to commend all the students that came out this evening. We had, as you know, 262 students who exceeded state standards. And again, I must say, I want to say, you know, I want to thank the parents and the family members that have stood behind the children and have pushed them. And I encourage you to keep on pushing them until you can't stop. I mean, teaching and learning is the business that we're in, and there's always something to learn. I also want to thank the teachers that have worked with the students each and every day to provide a learning environment that suits their needs. I'm very, very proud of our students. For those of you who sat through today's presentation and I watched and you clapped for each and every single student, I say thank you. We have to recognize our students, we have to recognize their accomplishments, and continue to push forward. For those students who are still in the audience, I still want to give you some more, not homework, but there's some other things you need to do. Continue in your studies. But I ask that you look around you in your classrooms and work with those students that need a little assistance. Work with those students who are not paying attention. Ask your fellow classmates whether or not they need assistance. Take a look at their work. See where they're making their minor mistakes. And be that mentor for them. Share their wealth, share your knowledge, share your learning. If we do that as a community, then I guarantee that New Brunswick will continue to rise. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. If we can have a motion to approve the superintendent's report? Mr. General?
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Chukitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number six, the student representative report. I do believe that Ms. Martinez is absent today. Is that correct? Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, the facility committee report. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, Madam President. The water testing is up to date. No changes from the previous September Board of Education meeting results. The solar panels are completed and not have been turned on. The expected date for activation will be next month. The solar panels will be a savings of approximately $300,000 to the district. We're moving forward installing fencing around the middle school trailers to provide a safe environment. That, Madam President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Moving on to item number eight, the athletic committee report. Mrs. Sadowski?
Thank you, Mrs. Solis. The athletic committee met earlier this afternoon. And at present, our entire athletic program is under review by board committees, administrators, and staff. So at this time, being that it is under review, we'll be getting back to you next month with some of our plans. I also need a motion to accept the bank reconciliation report.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski. Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Chukitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number nine, the curriculum and policy committee report. Mrs. Seawood?
Madam President, the curriculum and policy committees both met this month, and the recommendations for revisions of policies that are, most are listed as revised. We already had these policies. Some revisions were made in an attempt to update and keep current with, more than anything, the language that has been used. And curriculum committee met, those recommendations are included on the consent agenda. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Seawood. Item number 10, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report. Dr. Caldwell? Okay, thank you. Item number 11, this is my report. I'm just so excited that as a district, we have 262 students that exceeded, again, not just the levels for the city of New Brunswick, for our district, but this is overall for the state of New Jersey. This is definitely a day for us to celebrate and to be proud of what our children are capable of. We are always striving to improve. And like Ms. Guza said, the facts that we get from, the reports that we get from these assessments really enable us to use the data to move forward and to continue to succeed and to continue to push forward with our students. I would like to acknowledge the fact that it is Hispanic Heritage Month. There are a lot of activities going on in our district, activities that board members love to be invited to. And so, please, administrators, anytime there's an event, please remember to send your invitation down our way so we can attend your schools and... and see the wonderful, the other wonderful things happening, uh, because we do like to partake. And with that being said, I would like to move on to item number twelve, the public comment portion of this meeting. Please state your name and your address when you approach the microphone.
My name is Sarah. I'm a Rutgers student. Um, my question here is, Resolution of states that the New Brunswick Board of Ed is providing middle school and high school students with educational services on the dangers of the evening. Um, I don't know what is unique about this and what have you guys done already?
Go ahead, please, if I could, for Miss Anton Smith?
Your question was, what is unique about this and what are we doing?
And what has been done, yes.
Okay. Based on what we've, we've heard in the news, uh, we've taken the initiative to work on assemblies um, that are going to be happening in all of our schools with our six-way-three population. Also, we have a presentation um, being presented by the county here to the whole community on October seventeenth from five-thirty to eight o'clock called Hidden in Plain Sight. Uh, what is unique is that we are not waiting for something to happen to our students. We are taking the lead and attacking um, this epidemic that is now going across the country.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. Dr. Johnson, members of the board. My name is Monica Rivera. I'm a resident of New Brunswick and a registered voter in my home state of New Jersey since I was eighteen. My son is short of LeBron. He's a twelfth grader in Brunswick High School. And prior to this, he was a student at New Brunswick Middle School at North Sterling. And as of March twenty-twenty, falls for me a registered voter here in the city of New Brunswick. We're not here in New Brunswick and I think that's important to understand. On July sixteenth of twenty nineteen, the athletic director Craig Lowry replied to me, to Principal Redler, and to Coach Nathaniel Harris in regards to my son's eligibility to play football. I have email proof and not just the one that I released. I have solved. Why can't Mr. Lowry lie? For no reason other than clearly Craig Lowry has an inability to do his job. I have emails from February through July sixteenth. I have other emails. I have to see the principal, as well as the coach, to make that attention. I have phone records showing that I called him over twenty-six times and never got anything but a voicemail and a call. August twelfth, I sent an email, just to make sure that we didn't have issues. I'm still waiting to hear back. Let me explain how it starts from the beginning. My son did not have normal circumstances in his transfer, which I cannot discuss in public form, but I have shared with the superintendent, Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Redler, and I shared them with Coach Lowry. He stated that this would be somehow eligible to get my son a waiver so that he would not have to sit the thirty days. Coach Lowry, excuse me, Craig Lowry, told me that it would be a long shot, but that he was willing to do everything he could to get Jordan those thirty days since it was two senior year. Apparently, well, apparently Craig Lowry just wanted to not do his job. Of course, now Craig Lowry had no reason to do a good job. Why? Because he faced no consequence. He apparently got a commotion to do less work with a job title and retained his salary. This is what we're teaching at New Brunswick, that we have, we accept no accountability for our actions here. So should all the kids just disrespect their teachers and fail classes because the lesson is no consequence? Or is it just the children who are paying the consequences? Well, my son, what did my son and his teammates get? They got shown that their hard work and dedication are nothing to anyone. Not at the NJSAA, not at the GNC, and not here at home, and definitely not the Mr. Craig Lowry. Some of these kids held jobs, made their work schedules around practice all summer, walked to the other side of town in the heat and the rain, or both, to make sure they made it to practice. But what you, Craig Lowry, have allowed is all, once again, when New Brunswick is to be together, the town and easily gets walked all over, and that stops today. Those boys did their job and Craig Lowry did not. The NJSAA official statement made it clear that no paperwork was ever submitted until Mr. Hendricks did it, and it was too late. Craig Lowry still has the same salary for failing at his job and now doing less work with a smaller title. And those kids get stripped away from their hard work after they succeeded at their jobs. By the way, succeeding both academically and athletically. In the message that we're sending today, please let me tell you something. Showing up to one game when they're mentally and emotionally defeated does not mean anything to them. What does mean something are Mr. Redler, Mr. McDermott, Mr. Infante, and Mr. Dizuba, and plenty of other of these amazing educators come to those games every single Friday. They don't show up just to save face. I'm here tonight to tell you I'm not gonna stand quiet, I want to not stand alone, and to make sure I notice that Craig Lowry needs to grow. He becomes the face of this as he should, and not these children. And we do everything possible as a community and together as a school district to get these kids back where they deserve, including their integrity, because it is very clear that Craig Lowry has no integrity. And that's the only right answer. Therefore, Dr. Johnson, and members of the board, I leave you with this. There's two types of people in this world, the hammer and the nail. You let me know what you decide. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick president, editor of New Brunswick Today. I wanted to start by saying that it's obvious that something's going very well at the Lincoln Annex based on how many students did so well on, on the exams. And I just wanted to learn a little bit more about what an annex means. Uh, what does that distinction mean? You know, we have a couple of schools that are right next to each other, Red Shaw and Livingston, but they're not an annex of one another, whereas we have Lincoln and Lincoln Annex, which are several blocks apart and have an annex. Can, can somebody just enlighten me as to what the difference is between it being two separate schools and it being an annex?
It's just in a name because when we purchased the old St. Peter's School from the Diocese of Metcuchin, we weren't sure what use it was going to have. Eventually, it morphed into being Lincoln School, but we already had a Lincoln School. We didn't know if that would continue, so it's just a name. That's all it is. It might have become permanent as the new Lincoln School. It might not have, depending upon the use. It morphed into being the Lincoln School right now, but it's still the Lincoln School Annex. That's the official name. It's just a name.
Okay. Uh, and of course, at the last meeting, I did bring up the rumors that Robert Wood Johnson was trying to buy it. And, uh, you know, the answer at that point was no comment at this time. So I'm here back again. I'd like to ask if there's any update on the Lincoln Annex. Is the Board of Education still entertaining offers to sell the Lincoln Annex?
Well, just so you know, I'm the board attorney. There's been no offers, no communications. Any dealings in real estate must be in writing. So there's rumors swirling around. I mean, they even had the Diocese of Metcuchin call me and say, are we selling it? What's going on? I'm the board attorney. I handle all real estate transactions, purchases, leases, contracts, receipt of offers. As I sit here today, I have no knowledge of what you're talking about. I know there are rumors out there. There's been, obviously, there's been some substantial proposal put forth by the state of New Jersey about building a cancer center. Where it's going to be located, I don't know, but I'm telling you officially as a board attorney, I know nothing about this.
Thank you. Can the board promise uh, that there will be notice of any sale to the public? Uh, you know, is there anything that needs to be done to sell the school besides just a resolution of the board, a vote?
No, I think, I think you have to have money changing hands. There have to be resolutions. There have to be posted in our agenda. There have to be hearings. If there's a contract to purchase or to sell, it always comes before the vote. That's generically, and this would be no different.
Right, and so you mentioned resolutions, and so the reason I ask is because your agenda typically does not come out until a few hours before the meeting. It was posted today about two PM, about five hours before the meeting. Uh, what I'm asking is, can you promise, as a board, can you promise me and the New Brunswick community that if there is a resolution to sell the Lincoln Annex School, that you'll give us a full month's notice? That you'll tell us at the meeting before that the vote's gonna be at the next meeting? And we could all get just added to an agenda the day of?
Yes.
You can promise that, right?
As a board attorney, I'll make that represent that, yes, if there's anything going forward for a purpose, or a sale, or a lease, I don't know. And there would be adequate public notice, and I'm not talking five hours. There would be plenty of notice.
Okay, super. Thank you for that. Um, can you, the board, promise me and the community that you will not close the Lincoln School or the Lincoln Annex until a new replacement school is ready to open?
You're way ahead of the game. I don't know what you're talking about. Um, if, if, if there's gonna be a purchase or a sale, that facility, we'd have to have another facility in place.
Great, that's good to hear. The reason I ask these things is because I am aware of the, the Cancer Institute project. And as recently as today, asked a question of our governor and the president of DEFCO. And they had an opportunity to deny outright that the Lincoln Annex was their preferred site and did not, denied. They, in fact, they, they kind of hinted that it would be there because they said it needs...
Hint, hint, we've calculated. As some of the attorney, you've got to deal with writings, with proposals.
Okay, then, then please go to, go to Mr. Cradaville's Facebook page and you can see where he's announced the countdown of the opening of the Rutgers Cancer Institute and has stated that they plan to begin construction in the fall of twenty twenty, this time next year.
Mr. Hendricks? Mr. Hendricks, if I may, um, you know, the board wishes nothing but to have full transparency with the community. Like you know, Mr. Hendricks has already told you, same thing goes, you know, from last, from the last meeting. We do not have any official offers. However, we are aware that they are interested in that location. There was a meeting last week. DEFCO called our district, had a meeting with Mr. General and Mr. Ladolce, where the possibility was discussed. However, like Mr. Hendricks has informed you, there is nothing on paper official. There is no official offer. And so, for the time being, yes, we are aware that there is interest. However, there is nothing official. And the school will not make any decisions without taking all of our students' best interests in mind. Also, this is, this is a decision that would definitely require us to, to involve the, the community in one way or another in, in the form of notification as to what will happen.
Thank you for that. I'm just, again, concerned because of the timeline that Robert Wood has publicly stated for their seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar development project. And so, if they, if they want that site and they want to start construction this time next year, uh, I don't see how that can work because there's no replacement school ready and it's, you can't build one that quick.
Year considers the same as ours.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Uh, I, I won't belabor these points, but I do uh, just want to touch on an issue that came up prior in the year. So at one of your meetings earlier this year, the BA cited a state law that requires the school's development authority to be involved in all capital improvement projects that are, cost more than five-hundred-thousand dollars. And, uh, you know, I, I pushed back by saying the Lincoln Annex was an example of where this, that, that, you know, law wasn't followed. But it turns out that, that that part of the law was essentially repealed in January twenty sixteen, less than nine months before the Lincoln Annex opened. And uh, I, I know that the bill that was adopted in January twenty sixteen and signed in twenty sixteen uh, was S-3247, A-4928. And when it was adopted by one of the committees, Senator Teresa Ruiz was quoted as saying, you know, that this was a direct request from the SDA for them to pass this bill, eliminating that cap uh, or that, or that, uh, you know, threshold. And quote is, "There are districts that have funding in place and projects that exceed the five-hundred-thousand-dollar cap, and because of the nuance in law, they're unable to begin those projects." Can you tell me, was the Lincoln Annex one of those projects that, that was the reason the law was changed?
Mr. General?
No, I mean, they, I don't believe our project had anything to do with the law being changed. They, they have changed the law because districts like ours have struggled building schools with SDA. Because it's like Red Shaw School, it takes twelve years. And we know, like our North Sterling School that we built in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, we can do, we can build schools ourselves. So I think they finally listed the districts who said they can do it with ourselves, and that's why they changed the law. The difference is, they are not going to fund you if you build it yourself. So where we really are still, um, I would say, not using the word arguing, but where our, our point is, you should still be paying for it and let us do it ourselves. We've proven the ability to do that.
Understood. And uh, you know, I appreciate you informing me about that. I don't know why that law was changed, but I do think that, uh, you know, the local district should play a greater role in, you know, your facilities plan. And, and that's one of the reasons that I'm coming here tonight to talk about the Lincoln Annex School. Because like I said, obviously, it's working. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. We got a functioning school in a neighborhood that needs one. I think we need to continue that, uh, and, and certainly not make any changes next year. So, uh, if, if I could just, just, uh, finish this by saying, if, if there's anybody here who came out specifically because of this issue, if you came out here and you want to see the Lincoln Annex School stay, just please stand so the board can see everybody who's here for the Lincoln Annex School to support.
Mr. Cradaville, your out of order.
I, I apologize. I, I just wanted you to see the, see the support for the school here. And thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Gore. First, I will clap to say thank you, no disrespect to the, the man who gives away his sports. But I will say thank you to the New Brunswick's, uh, high school, to the security, to the staff of New Brunswick, to the rivals, and to the coach they had going out of the way. But some of our children were taking a long way to the principal's relatives. I will say thank you on that. And I really, I really came out with your heart and helped in some of our students. Like I said, man, no disrespect to what you said, to where, where are you? And also, I'm here to support Mr. Cradaville, too, what he said about the school. As we can see, how big New Brunswick High School is, the number of award you gave out, and the difference between Lincoln Annex, where you gave out this many to show, wow, that's one of your smartest schools in New Brunswick, I can see. And there's also one of your number-one students from New Brunswick, Lincoln Annex. So yes, look to where I pray that you do not change those kids for another school because when you describe us now, how what you would be focused to do where they're settling in one location, how they would have to try to get adjusted to a new location, just like when you're moving in a house. I say with the same thing with school. So please, look to where you see how smart the kids are and how great they're doing. Please do not sell the school and try to move to a location. Please, we're begging you on that. Thank you. Thank you for your effort.
And I did feel quickly, I know that there were quite a few of you that stood up as Lincoln Annex parents. I, I do just want to acknowledge you for, for coming here and for being so interested in, in the future of your children's schools. And just so you know, my own, one of my own children attends Lincoln Annex. And so, I mean, needless to say, our, our board is very dedicated and committed to the well-being of all of our students and maintaining a, a school building where they can continue to learn so effectively like they're doing now. Again, we, we always strive to keep the children's best interest at heart. Okay, so again, thank you for coming out. We really do appreciate your concerns. The next person could have approached them.
Good evening, Gore. My name is Lakeisha Malo Carter. I just wanted to speak briefly on...
I just wanted to speak briefly on the situation with the New Brunswick football team. And I just wanted to say that, you know, our young men have worked hard on and off the field, in and out of season, to achieve such a great milestone. And for our seniors, they won't get a chance to have that experience of playoff, not a league win or whatever. And their discredency and their coaching discredency was judged publicly to hear people call their child a cheater for something they have absolutely no control over. It's heartbreaking. And I just wanted to know, is there anything that the district is planning to do? And if you're not, I'd like to watch you to recognize our young men for this season, for their effort, because they won't get, whether they made it to playoffs and won or not is not the question. They actually did the work to get there and now are stripped for no doing of their own. So, is there any plans to recognize them for this achievement that has now been taken away from them?
Well, I have been at every game except the Edison game. And as most of you that know me, I am a proud graduate of New Brunswick High School. So, if it's up to me, I'd award him the state championship trophy right now. And the effort that they put in at Saraville the other night, which I'm sure broke most of their mothers' hearts, the effort that they put in and how they conducted themselves, they should be given the Nobel Peace Prize as far as I'm concerned. So, I can guarantee you that this board is not done yet. We are not happy. We don't like the way our school has been treated and our young men and our coaching staff. And I'm telling you, we're gonna make sure, as far as I'm concerned, their record is 4-2. They beat the Scadaver, okay? So, we will do something. We have been discussing it and we are pursuing some other avenues. So, we're not done yet. We Zebras never quit.
That's right. That's right. Thank you. That's good to hear.
Good evening, I'm Bishop Flores Blunt, resident of Brunswick. Parent of the Blunt boys who play for the New Brunswick Zebra varsity football team. I said before you today, a little bit, it's even kind of confused record, most importantly. We talk about our children's safety and we make that priority. But I believe that our children are hardworking, just need to be safe physically, but mentally and emotionally. And for them to be subjugated to having an athletic director not only resign, almost saying that he puts on them, not have head and not be held accountable, but they're relegated to seeing his face in their school, that is worse. Really, that's horrible. Same way, I find that to be awful. For the board to allow somebody to resign and not immediately remove it just for our kids' emotional well-being. Not only that, but these boys have played hard this year. Blood, sweat and tears. I happened to be a son or a father of a son that on Friday night, he went out and played karate and suffered a concussion that I believe most of the board seen. His name is Markel Blunt. While he was laying on the ground, they someone wrapped the L down to Markel. "You are a dead man laying on the field, filthy cheater." We have all yelled at him also, had a video. He slammed my son on the ground and he paid a price for a debt that he didn't owe. I'm calling for a Crane Lottery to be removed effective from the immediately from the New Brunswick High School. There has to be something done. We cannot continue to be the villain led by the unqualified doing the unbelievable for so long so little that we now took the impossible with nothing. For some of these boys, it's their last chance. For some of these boys, it's their life, it's their passion, it's what they will probably purpose on earth to do. But for the rest of their lives, they'll be trapped into this fantasy that they were not winners, that they were losers, that they were cheaters. They will forever be connected to Crane Lottery and this day. Our community, for the first time in almost a decade, galloped out, the Scadaver game, the North Brunswick game. We finally came together as one to push our boys on. And for this to now have been received outcome, even when we didn't have a primary call, that lives were being on, were gonna be free, that students were gonna be able to ride on buses, that family were gonna be able to ride on buses, that people were gonna be able to travel with the team. No one showed up. That is a sad night, not only on us as people, but us as a community. Boys, I'm telling you, no matter what y'all do, no matter how y'all do it, y'all have my hand in the applause. Having said that, something has to be coming forward. And so, I'll leave the decision to your hands. But that is my request. And I'll be looking forward to hearing something in the soon coming days. Thank you.
So, he's here to continue commenting about Lincoln Annex? So, I understand that there's nothing official and there are not signed papers. I have heard from people who are in power in New Brunswick that there are plans to sell Lincoln Annex. So, I just want to ask the board that this cannot happen. So, there have been several schools that have been demolished and we shouldn't be demolishing schools, we should be building schools. And I would like to ask you to promise that nothing of that's going to happen in New Brunswick.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Gueye. I'm a city of New Brunswick resident and I'm here in support of keeping the annex open. I think it's very strange that the board starts the conversation by saying, well, you know, in this case, saying, oh, there are no formal offers or nothing paper. But then a few minutes later, you say, oh, there's been informal talks about it. So, and from our side, you know, the neighborhood has heard that there's deep one power that know about this happening, but yet you're still denying it. So, I just think this is really weird that you're not, like, coming up with a solution for, you know, building a school before you decide to sell another school. So, I hope that, you know, you would, you know, your wisdom decided to go. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Yvonne. I am a Lincoln Annex student. I'm here because I was informed that they're gonna sell the school to Robin Wood Johnson. And I think it's okay, but at one point, I think that it's wrong because you would have taken out two remaining schools. And it's wrong because, well, if you have schools, you shouldn't be just taking them away. But maybe you should sell other land to the hospital because there are larger parts in New Brunswick that they can make another center for them to work at. And it doesn't just affect me, but the whole school because people are just wanting to go there. And if you have any plans, you have to inform everyone in the school. And I just wanna ask you if you are willing to sell the school. And if you are, then I just wanna say that you better have something of like a new school waiting for us to open before they sell the school to Robin Wood Johnson so that we all have a way for another school to open for us. Thank you.
And thank you for coming up and having the courage to address the board. We appreciate your comments.
Buenas noches a todos. Soy Elizabeth Sanchez. También estoy hablando en representación de la escuela Lincoln Annex de New Brunswick.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Sanchez and I also want to comment on the Lincoln Annex School. So, I'd like to ask the board to promise that the school is not going to be sold. And if you decide to sell before doing so, to have another school open for our students. And I'm glad that you're going to make the right decision. And I know that your priority is the best for our students. In other occasions, we have come to the board of the division to ask for, to fight for good, dignified schools for our students. So, if you remember, in past years, Lincoln School had overcrowding and problems with air conditioning. So, now recently, Lincoln Annex was opened in order to help Lincoln overcrowded school, overcrowded school. So, she's asking that please not to sell and why would that be the reason? So, I don't want to think that we're being discriminated for being the majority of the community who are Hispanic and not Latinos and not women. Because there have been times when transportation costs have been cut and this is very offensive to the students. So, I'm asking that you do not discriminate against people of color or different origin, country of origin because the United States comprised of people from multiple places and diversity. And I am very thankful for the great opportunity that I have in this country. And I would like to ask you to promise that we're going to continue providing opportunities for our students, Hispanic students. Thank you.
Before the next person, approach the microphone. If this has to do with Lincoln Annex School, we would like to move on to the next topic. We have addressed the matter. And so, if anyone else would like to discuss Lincoln Annex School, I invite you to reach out to central office with any other questions. And to the parent that was just at the microphone, I would just like to address that comment. Has she already left? I didn't see where she went. I do just wanna say that that comment was offensive regarding our district being discriminatory against Latinos. Our board is a nine-member board, four of which of those members are Latino. And in our business of education, we do not look at race or ethnicity when it comes to education. We are here to educate all of our students regardless of, again, their race, their ethnicity, their gender identity, their migratory status. Those are not things that we look at when we educate our children in this district. And so, I do just wanna say that that was extremely offensive. Now, if anyone has any new business to address, please approach the microphone.
Hello. Good evening, members of the board. You already said that no more about Lincoln Annex. I'm just going to say something very short. My name is Maria Chinito. I'm thanking not just for me, but for every single parent up here that, please, if you receive any offer from the hospital, please say no and think about our kids and about the neighborhood over there because we don't have any more schools. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Ryan. I'm a student athlete here.
My name is Jordan Navarre. I'm a senior here. I'm also a athlete here for the president. My name is Michelle. I'm a student athlete. First, I just wanna address, I won't say anyone specifically, but as a senior, well, coming here as a freshman to join the school from a different district, I feel a little disrespected. But when I myself made a memorable moment out there last year on November 26th and people that I've never seen before, my history is in my life, decided to jump into my official, my family and my much beloved to get to where I'm at in that moment. And then, secondly, And then secondly, um, this year regarding the football team, I also feel disrespected um, by the whole situation emotionally um, and mentally a little bit. I just think um, that me and my teammates put in too much work from freshman year till now, um, both for Alabama D and uh, the rain and all the weather conditions that we were stripped of something that we were too hard for. And every day, um, you have to walk by and see the person who took it away from us. I think we need all these things experienced. Um, and then again, um, I feel disrespected by the school because before all this, all this controversy happened, um, they didn't wanna give us a pep rally. They didn't wanna, they didn't wanna give us a pep rally for football league because of the incident that happened to your brother. And then as soon as all the controversy happened on the football team, they decided to give us a pep rally, uh, by buses and all waiting. And I just wanna like, that's very disrespectful to myself and uh, the rest of the football team.
Picking back up all the, my opinion, my father said, it was basically the whole team feels a whole squad of mental and emotional abuse. For this because as my mother said before, we do not person involved, I'm not so, the person involved for this entire controversy we even started has not taken the face for it, yet we have. Our parents have, the community has. We have taken the face from the use of other coaches, news reporters, media, um, and other players from other districts. Schools that we played, that we did transfer, now talking to us all over the place talking about how, oh, you got a one because you had a player, uh, he cheated this, you know, it's all as for my other team and a lot of other teams purposely because we're so-called cheaters. And now we carry that stigma for every game that we walk into for the rest of the season. Instead of us being carried as we run the team that, that started breaking up tremendous program that is known to be we're not carried as the team that cheated its way as it always does and we never blew anything by the rules. And now we're faced with adversity that we've never, that we have gone through before but not to this extent. And also, as Aya said, we feel very disrespected by it because after this controversy, that's when we started getting a big pity party for us. As, oh, let's, let's do some extra stuff with them because they're going to us. Where was the buses to away games when we were 1-0, 2-0, 3-0, even 4-0 after second day, what the state's largest upset against the Scadwey? Something that the other team hasn't done in multiple years. Two years ago when we did, we got business suspended on the field and Scadwey came out over the majority of this right now. And everybody into that, even our own district, even some of our own staff and uh, and teacher that we're supposed to look up to tell us, oh, you guys have a chance, you guys are good. Yet, when we were going up, going and going behind everything to our to our ability that we created, we were hard for playing, practicing, trying to downpour, shooting heat we don't have from even when construction was going on with primary school and those cancelled practices, we met at a local park to run our own practice. So we still fight for the championship that we're hoping we can get into. Hoping that team slips up and we lose the rest of the game instead of going into the tournament. And now dealing with um, always attention through school trying to make us feel like when at team, at practice now, everybody talks and I'm like, you're a new one, you're fighting, nothing anymore. And also, it's not just affecting us emotionally and mentally, it's also affecting us actually because I need to be personally from a couple of schools I've been, I've been talking to for football, they are now lost interest in talking to me and probably most of my team members because they're reading what the media is saying and saying that in part we're so cheaters. Our head coach now is trying to take the responsibility to take it away from us which we feel bad about because he shouldn't carry the burden of school finding adversity.
Um, my name is Michelle, and I'm a captain today. I'm a captain and these things I've worked, they have worked hard for the, for the accomplishment for the goal and being the Scadwey was a big difference. And now having buses coming, uh, coming here with us and giving pep rallies that we didn't have last year, um, it's like, well, it's something we should have to do because they didn't, like, we said we didn't have it back when we were, when we were so ready to, where we can't really have to.
I gotta go. Thank you.
I feel bad as soon as we were marked with it and normally have love in game, just really like, hurting me down. My brothers here and uh, he really feel like it's pretty hurt that we have to go around here and it's so much easier to care for the Scadweys and the cheaters and other schools. And uh, you know, like, at times, some cheaters, they're like, a freshman, right? I'm feeling a bit, but it's been a bit, we've had friends or eight, or even, there's other players and schools. Also, last thing, um, we also appreciate, but we don't at the same time, the sorryness of the word from Mr. Johnson coming to our practice and Mr. Larder coming to us and apologizing including us a type of furore speech to try to keep our hopes up because nothing was official at the time. We appreciate it, but at the same time, with no disrespect at all to you, sir, looking you in your eye as a young man speaking to a man. If you're doing it as a part of just uh, because I'm the superintendent, I feel entitled that I should say something, please keep it to yourself because we never got any type of flaws, any type of good job or anything like that from our athletic director and you guys went again, we were 1-0, 2-0, 3-0, and 4-0. And even with our one loss to Scadwey, which made us even a better team, uh, one loss to the, pardon, excuse me. Which made us even a better team because we looked at it as, okay, we had a team that's more physical than us. It was like, that's okay, they're in the playoffs, we'll see them again. Nope. So, and that goes to everybody else that if there is something you might say or if you, as you feel entitled to do it because of your position on Board of Education or your position within the status of the community, please keep it to yourself. We appreciate it, we'll sit and listen, but just know that we do not want it because, again, we never got the appreciation for the very game. That's it. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Amanda Varado.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Varado.
Y tengo un hijo en Macquarie School y tengo tres preguntas para ustedes.
Y tengo un hijo en Macquarie School? Uh, sorry, I have a child in Macquarie School and I have three questions for you.
Primera pregunta seria, desde cuándo, ¿hay alguien ustedes que pueda responder? Desde cuándo ustedes saben que la clase de estabilidad de cuarto grado no tiene maestra hasta la fecha?
I want to know if you are aware that the fourth grade stability class has no teacher, uh, to know.
La segunda pregunta sería, este, después de clases, ¿qué programas hay para niños con discapacidades?
My second question is, uh, if you are aware of any programs after school for children with disabilities.
Igual, en summer school, veo que también no hay actividades para los niños especiales. Me pregunto porque, en verdad, siento que ustedes tienen muy abandonados a esta minoría de niños.
And uh, third, I want to ask if there are any facilities for during the summer for children with disabilities. And I believe that uh, these students are kind of like abandoned for left on their own.
Y me gustaría, ya que estoy aquí, me gustaría saber porque el district no está ofreciendo este, terapias ocupacionales o por eso, no soy yo de terapias. Ah, but, eh, yo no sé, en verdad, este, se les hace no ver y les dañan para estas clases.
I would like to know why the district is not offering physical therapy uh, for um, for science?
No, it's ellos.
Ah, but, yes.
Ya sé que es un poco...
Una vez, una vez, uno de ustedes, esta noche.
I would like to hear an answer from one of you tonight.
We do want to help to discuss her concerns about her child and we'd like to have Ms. Kathy Antoine Smith get her information after the meeting uh, so you can be connected with uh, not just the resources but given the answers to your questions.
¿Y qué programas ofrecen después de escuela?
Um, the programs uh, it's being offered after school.
Again, we can discuss the matter concerning your child when the meeting is done with Mr. K, Ms. Kathy Antoine Smith.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so my name is Flavien Catherine, uh, I'm on the district. Um, and uh, I guess we can just sort of guess what this is about. Uh, I may not be a licensed educator, but I've worked at the summer camp in my hometown for seven years for what that's worth and gone to a point where I went to music classes. On average, I work, I spend eight hours a day with those kids as a sort of teacher, mentor, friend. And if there's one thing I've learned from working with kids is that you don't only work with them, but you work for them.
Ese, entonces, para, para la necesidad de la comunidad, eh, puede que no sea de verdad, es esencial. Pero he hecho algo en el momento de la ciudad antes de seis años con Maria. Y es que al punto que dijo dos castanistas, medio chavo, o sea, la estadía, pues, tiene un tipo de, entonces, me...
You don't work for yourself, you don't work for their parents, you don't work for your boss, and certainly you don't work for any outside corporations. Children are first and foremost to your clients.
Nada más es que, nada más es que, al menos, nada más es que, previamente, nada más es que, no, 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 no. Um, pues, eso es, eso es, eso es.
I understand the politics of any decision in New Brunswick are more complicated than those of any given individual, but I believe that if you were to sell the school, you would be failing your collectives and thus failing to do your job.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, however, we do have to find some, yes, who is translating for anyone that needs uh, Spanish speaking. So the translation is not required.
Okay. Uh, what was on? What's more is people who work for children, you would be failing as role models, giving in to bad influences and refusing to stand up to a vote, putting that all these interests forward as a child.
Teniendo en cuenta que la aprendizaje de cualquier profesión en el mundo es más complicada que la de cualquier persona, pero creo que si se le pierde la escuela, está ahí apoyando a sus clientes. Y por lo tanto, no podía hacer su trabajo.
But if RWJ really wishes to make the world and the city a more livable place, it is the purpose of hospital correct, to keep life intact, then you will hold them to that standard and put the children's interests first because they are your equals. Do your job as members of an education system to demonstrate that equality not only between the children and yourselves, but between the families that live and learn in New Brunswick and the people who wish to develop it without their say. Failing to demonstrate that equality empowers developers to rearrange the city and dislocate its citizens. Developers who, in their carelessness, refuse to stand against gentrification and refuse to stand against racism in America. Since you stand against these things, you should not sell the school if you give the message is clear.
Thank you for your time. Um, I did mention earlier, anyone else needing to discuss uh, the issue with Lincoln Annex, or the subject, rather, uh, you can reach out to Central Office. Now, if anyone else has any new business to discuss, please approach the microphone.
Hello, my name is Gloria Boffler. I have a senior sub here and I just wanted to know, um, what investigation that you're doing for the football team? Because it's a right, but I'm getting to pick our four days back. And from what I've read, the young man in question has been in our school since February, before the new year had even started. So why his paperwork or whatever needed to be done was not done between February to September? Also, I do believe Clay Flattman should leave this school. All right. Please, please, that's, and I think they should. He has big balls. And I just need to know, what are your thoughts on that? What investigation are you on doing?
First, three months, I'm gonna pursue your help.
At this point in time, we, we cannot discuss personnel matters in public.
So what do you want us to go and tell our kids, our boys? This is their last year, this is my son last year. When are we going to get home?
You know, like Mrs. Gossie mentioned earlier, the football team, they're all still winners in our eyes. And...
That's our eyes, but it's not the public eyes. It's not the newspaper, it's not China's web. We don't have to hear it, we have to hear it, our kids have to hear it. Social media.
We understand your concerns and will take them into advisement.
Like, do we get a date? Because when those kids walk in here, you hold them accountable to make sure that they follow the rules here. And Clay Flattman didn't follow the rules, he's still walking around. So what are we teaching our kids? The rules on the goals of some people? He says that, but he's still in the school walking around. That's not right.
We understand your concerns. Unfortunately, we cannot discuss personnel matters in public.
So when can we discuss it? When can I have a date to discuss? Because this is my son, I say, he got three more games and then leaves that for football. He don't go to that field no more. And this is the year that they was on a big game. They have, did a whole preseason from freshman year. They went from 4-0 to 0-0 in the store in, what, three days?
It wasn't their fault.
That could have been solved six months ago, eight months ago, in February. That's not right. And it's not, he don't cut it. It don't cut it. And him walking around here, it don't cut it. It's not right.
Yes, good evening, honor of that, children of this, um, you're welcome. Um, I, first, I, good evening, um, board. I want first ask Dr. Johnson, what do you think is the single greatest challenge for this district academic?
I think it's important that we continue to refine our practices as educational leaders, as teachers. It's important that we identify continuously, identify what strategies we need to reach our students academically, socially, um, and at the same time, push for higher, higher thinking. That's not just for this district. That's not just for this district, that's just the root as a collective body of educators that we must always continue to do.
But now, but in terms of...
I also believe that we need to have teachers here each and every day, on time, every day, teaching effectively each and every day. That's a challenge that I had in this district and sometimes I continue to have. But the majority of the district, I'm feel very, very strong in how our teachers are working together, planning together, and have started to meet the needs of our students, as you can see in our presentation. Unfortunately, we...
Sorry, Dr. Johnson.
Unfortunately, we have had some struggles in mathematics and we'll continue to provide the support.
Congratulations.
There's no congratulations, it's just continuous work. There's nothing to be rewarded about, our proficiency rates are not where they are. But if you take a look at the research, what really matters is what happens between the teacher and the student in the classroom when no one's looking.
Okay, okay, okay. I want to go back, because last time there was a gentleman here who talked about Brahman. He was saying, he was from East Coast College and he talked about how students are coming in and the importance of them being able to present themselves and to speak well. And I want to go back and look at, I want you to look at your results for like third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade in English. Would you say that we've been deficient in the district over the past 10, 15 years?
It depends on how you define deficiency. I'll just, one question. It depends on how you find deficiency in English language arts. I've seen growth for the past four years from when I came into the district or when our team has continued to go into different, in the district, working towards teaching our students how to read and write. So there has been growth. Now, if you're talking about proficiency rates, okay, we are moving in an upward trend. So, I commend the growth that our students have demonstrated. However, we do need to talk about mathematics.
Why do we need to talk about mathematics?
Because that's where we struggle.
So, you jumped over the hurdle of English, you would say right now, completely? Maybe what, have you met the state, the state efficiency?
I'm going to ask that you use the remainder of your time...
Yeah, we always do that.
As a, again, this is the public comment portion. If you have questions directly for the superintendent, I will ask that you direct those to Central Office, then his office will come, get back to you. If you have any other comments for the board, we'll listen.
Okay. Um, my, my next, before we go into the, to the left, I just wanted to touch a little bit on the Brahman part because the gentleman talked about Brahman last time. And he, I was hearing that they do a sort of Brah class in high school. And I, I thought that was, well, why are you teaching Brah in the high school? Shouldn't that be in the earliest grades? I mean, do you think that there should be more of an emphasis on Brah or should we, let's say, but like, um, we, we kind of forge more of a, or an emphasis on Brah in the earliest grades?
If you have any questions, Mr. Anderson, please direct them to Central Office. At this point in time, you have exceeded your five-minute allotment. And if there's anyone else in the public who'd like to address this board, I invite you to approach the microphone.
You was a gentleman here turning around, you did not do that to him. You did not do that to him, I know that.
Thank you for your time, sir. If there's anyone else who'd like to address the board, please approach the microphone.
I do have another question.
I'll say this one last time, Mr. Anderson, if you have any other questions...
I do.
You can address them to Central Office.
But this, this has...
You are out of order, sir. And if there's anyone else who'd like to approach the microphone, please do so now.
Carlos Ramirez, currently working in Brunswick today and also studying at New Brunswick High School. First off, I want to start by praising the school on the vaping meeting, I would call it, that was given out a few days ago. I really want to say that it's the first time I see a step forward into bringing awareness into issues that are actually happening at this school. However, I do think that our security needs to be timed, especially each morning. Personally, we've seen lines where certain security members that I won't name, chose technical lines that students go back for belongings and let them go. And there's other securities that take the time, even though they hold up the line for other students who are still waiting to actually and properly check. I personally have seen students entering the building and doing stuff that should have never done through the security checkpoint. Aside from that, I really think that it was a great step into bringing awareness into the issue that is occurring. And I have another question, which was, what happened to the principal, Mr. Clifford?
Mr. Clifford, is that the Health Sciences Psychology High School?
Alright, yeah, I was curious about that because somebody else took his post today during the award giving. What prompted the board to put our faculty in New Brunswick Middle School to start putting fencing around the trailers?
Your concern is the fences around the trailers?
Yes, I wanted to know why it was a fraud now, not before.
This was a security measure.
Alright. Okay, I guess my last thing would be with the vending machines at the launch here at the New Brunswick High School. They're taking students' money and sometimes it's more than just a dollar in return. I had a classmate complain to one of the principals and the principal told him that it was none of her business if the vending machines took her money. I think as consumers, we are paying for, or rather, paying, we should receive those items. Other than that, if it's none of your business, I think we should take the business, the vending machines and unplug them and put out, out of service sign. Other than that, I think it was a great move in talking about vaping. I still think that maybe they should be brought to other schools because the students that I've seen are students who had just entered this school district.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to item number 14, the Finance Committee report, Dr. Caldwell. I'm sorry. Item number 13, I'd like to have a motion on the consent agenda items. Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number 14, the Finance Committee report, Dr. Caldwell.
Sure, I'll get the report. So, for the Finance Committee, you have the bills list and then two resolutions to join the Ed Services Commission co-op for the purchase of electricity and gas procurement. So we just need a motion for those rules.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewald.
Yes.
Mrs. Civilian.
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Item number 15, I'll read the resolution for closed session. Before I do, we just wanted to make sure that the parent who needed to speak with Mrs. Antoine Smith is still here. Okay, alright, so we just... Yeah, might I even please get the phone number? Thank you. So, item number 15, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6 provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session and, whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters and matters of attorney-hyde privilege. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff. And the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. If I could have a motion for closed session? Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewald.
Yes.
Mrs. Civilian.
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
We are in closed session.